Good evening to all and welcome to the Murfreesboro City Board Special Call Meeting. I'd like to welcome all the board members here and all that are in attendance. Thank you for coming. We're going to go ahead and get started. It's a couple of things that I need to remind the board of, and I think we've already done that, and one of them is shutting off of our cell phones or cutting them on silence. And the second is, it's something that I learned at the board chair meeting about conducting the meeting. We're going to ask that we not have sidebar conversations, or we not hold our papers up like this, because people that are looking, or if they're talking, we want to make sure we give them our full attention and be courteous, and they don't think that there is a meeting going on behind that paper. So if you would like to speak or anything you'd like to say, just get my attention, and I'll call on you. Thank you. If I could, get a motion for the approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, sign of aye?
Aye.
Thank you. We have one consent item. Could there be a motion for the consent item?
Make a motion.
Second.
All right, we've had a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much. Now, we're going to get down to the meat of our meeting for tonight. I'd like to welcome Dr. Art Jones back, and thank him for his hard work on the leadership profile report, because I know you put in long hours to get this ready for us. So I'll turn this over to Dr. Art Jones.
Thank you. Dr. Diana McCully and I really enjoyed the two long days that we had here with you on September 28 and 29. And I would begin by saying that what we're reporting is what we heard, specifically as it relates to the executive summary, and then the delineation of strengths, challenges, issues, and desired attributes. We also want to thank those who took time to meet with us. We met with about, well, let me reframe that. We had input from approximately 200 of your constituents. That was both in the form of meetings, and I would say the small group meetings that were scheduled were very well attended. The community meeting, and we received a number of leadership assessment forums via email through our office, as well as those that were turned in to the schools or to Mrs. Ridley. So all of that data, both Diane and I reviewed, and the result is what we're presenting to you this evening. I won't, I'm assuming that you have all read the executive summary. There are just some parts of it that I will point out. Other specifics we will talk about when we get into the actual findings of our report. But I would point out at the very last paragraph on page one of your executive summary, we talk about there was an economist's relationship existing between some that were perceived as strengths, but also perceived as weaknesses. And I just point that out to you, that's not uncommon. That often happens, and for example, increased student diversity was seen as a strength, but the demands brought upon the system as a result of increased diversity was also a challenge that would need to be addressed. Same being true of finances. The financial status of the district perceived as a strength, but concern about maintenance of the stability of funding and the necessary support. And I won't reiterate, other than just to list the other two, parental involvement. Positive in one hand, but a challenge on the other in terms of gaining more input from those that are less, those parents that are less engaged and less involved in their schools. And finally, student achievement. It was identified as a strength, but also as a matter that needed to be addressed as an issue for the future. The other points I would make is that, and in the third paragraph, just to reiterate, we caution the board and others to look upon what we're presenting as criticisms of the district or any component. It's really an attempt to catalog the challenges, the issues that have been surfaced for the board's understanding, and in fact, this report could assist the board in future planning and thinking well beyond the selection of your next director. The other point I would make in the next to the last paragraph is that it's very unlikely that we would find a candidate who possesses all the characteristics that all of our respondents desired. It's our intention, however, that we will meet the challenge of finding an individual who possesses many of the skills and characteristics required, and that is our objective, that is our purpose. And you'll find that as a part of the executive summary on page three. In terms of the findings and conclusions, I'll get to a delineation, but I want to make sure that we emphasize two things. The data in this report does not represent a scientific sampling, and shouldn't necessarily be viewed as being reflective of a majority opinion of the district stakeholders. It is what we wanted it to be. It is feedback and input that'll guide and direct us, and guide and direct you as you go forward. The other point I want to make before we get to the findings is, we would be remiss if we did not thank Mrs. Linda Ridley and Mrs. Cheryl Harris for coordinating our visit, for assisting us in meeting the needs that surfaced during the days that we were here, and for supporting our efforts in ensuring that we received the assessment forms. So there are other people that we could thank. We were treated courteously and respectfully by all, but wanted to give special notice to the time that was invested by Mrs. Ridley and Mrs. Harris. In terms of the report itself, just to reemphasize, as I think we shared with you at a previous meeting, what is listed as consistent themes are those comments that we heard across two or more stakeholder groups, and normally, all stakeholder groups. We also, though, listed some things under each of the areas that we heard from individual stakeholder groups that were not consistent, but things that we thought that the board should hear. This report, after it is accepted and any revisions that the board suggests are made, we are recommending and reiterating our suggestion that it become a part of your website in terms of the information that goes out to the entire community, that it is and it becomes when you have accepted it as a public document. As far as the consistent strengths, let me pause, though, before I move into that. Do you have any questions about anything that I've reported at this point? And I should say that the board did receive via electronic mail all of these reports in advance of the meeting through Mrs. Baker, and I believe that went out yesterday morning. As far as strengths, consistent, I'm not going to list all of them, but I'll list those that I want to emphasize. But let me also point out, as you will see, that there isn't a priority assigned to any of these statements. They're all listed in alphabetical order, so that there isn't one that is perceived to be more important than the other. But among the consistent strengths that we heard, those things about the district that your stakeholders want to preserve was a designated preschool as a strength, administrative leadership as a strength, community involvement and support, the district size, low pupil teacher ratio, MTSU as a partner was identified as a strength. That's another area, by the way, that could have been listed as a strength and a challenge. The challenge is to maximize the relationship within MTSU and advance it going forward. So that is both a strength and perhaps a challenge, or a matter to be addressed in the future. The pre-K through six focus, the reputation and history of excellence of the district, and the quality received of the students, the resources provided in terms of professional development, strong city support, strong outstanding teachers, and well-maintained school facilities. Some other things that we heard from the board as identified strengths were the city schools foundation, exemplary programs, a family focus, and the unique demographics of each school. A little different way of stating some of the things that were stated, but we felt they should be included as representative of some of the things we heard from individual board members. In addition, from administrators, before and after-school programs, the education support staff, the history of innovation, excuse me, qualified applicant pool, and a vibrant community. From the community, the strengths that were listed, the adult literacy program, community and neighborhood schools, low turnover, quality of instruction, willingness to try innovative practices. And the faculty, connections through, though, underutilized at MTSU, per pupil expenditure, specialty schools, meeting the needs of students, and a strength identified by support staff with community outreach and the ESL program. As far as challenges or issues of the district, adjusting to the prospect of maintaining quality instruction in a more challenging environment, economic environment, consolidation conversations, coordination of year-round and traditional calendars, dealing with a divided and conflicted school board, dealing with the potential loss of sixth-grade students to new county middle schools, equitable zoning of all schools. The next bullet point is, and there are several iterations of this report, in the final report, I would recommend that we strike funding, because it is really stated again as maintenance of financial stability. So I would strike funding, which we will in the final document. Improving of communications with and among all stakeholders, keeping up with the challenges and demands of No Child Left Behind, morale, low morale, preservation of the district's reputation as a premier district, student underachievement in some subgroups, and testing versus teaching. A few comments that we also heard from different stakeholders, a challenge we heard from the board, was focus upon differentiated instruction, increased emphasis upon preparation of teachers serving a diverse student population, maintenance of a focus on children and learning, preparation for heightened student performance standards established by the Department of Education, and a proactive versus reactive approach to planning and decision-making, and finally, retention of identity of the city schools. Administrators, challenges, issues, creating a sense of community, dealing with a lack of focus, need to refocus on child-centered educational issues, recruitment of ESL teachers, and student mobility. Community, challenges, issues, accountability from the top-down, adversarial relationships, facility enrichment in small neighborhoods, passion for excellence beyond test scores, recruiting and retaining the best teachers, transition to special schools, i.e. magnet schools. Faculty, creation of a collaborative professional environment, dealing with teacher overload and burnout, maintenance of competitive salaries, need to prioritize the demands placed on teachers, and lack of coordination of expectations from central office. As far as support staff, maturing and aging neighborhoods that promote a decline in enrollment, not enough partnership with MTSU. And the last bullet point, I had struck from an original draft, it stayed in, it is not something that I heard in any of the meetings that I had, and Dr. McCully and I had talked about it. I think in fairness, it doesn't meet the test in terms of being heard enough to be included, so I would recommend that that be struck from the final report. In fact, that could be defined, if we were to leave it in, as an economist kind of statement. Now, to the crux of the conversations that we had and the input that we received, the administrative leadership contribution in terms of the characteristics desired. Jokingly, I would say leaps-tall buildings with a single bound. And that would describe the person that was identified. A long list of very, very, and it is a long list, because it was, these items that we're listing were consistent across various groups. A motivational and inspirational leader, the ability to effectively communicate with all stakeholders, ability to work with the school board to develop a shared vision for the district and reach agreement upon roles, responsibilities, and district goals. The person, man or woman, is expected to be approachable, accountable, and one who holds others accountable, collaborative yet decisive, compassionate, a consensus builder, creative and innovative, a data-driven and research-based decision-maker, demonstrated success in affecting improved student achievement in a diverse school system, diplomatic, fair and partial, fiscal management experience and skill, honesty and trustworthiness, knowledge of instruction and best practices, someone with an educational background as a teacher and/or principal at the elementary level. And I might, I have to add here, both Dr. McCully and my background define elementary as K-8, and where we're differentiating between elementary as we define elementary and the district, we have specifically referred to pre-K through six, and I'll point that out in a moment. Someone who is strong and has appropriate social interpersonal skills, strong organizational management skills, student-centered, team builder, visible in the schools, a visionary and proactive leader, and someone who's willing to listen to all. That's, you know, that's a very impressive list, and a very aggressive list, and we'll talk about how we might approach this in just a few moments. Other comments that were made, not consistent, but worthy of being included, we believe. An articulate spokesperson for the system, someone with business acumen, a change agent, someone who is detail-oriented, someone who provides evidence of ability to deal with difficult issues and situations, someone who is transparent, focuses on continuous improvement, and willing to step out of their comfort zone. Administrators, we're looking for a big-picture thinker, a cheerleader, a highly energetic, enthusiastic stick person, someone who is inclusive, not a micromanager, someone who possesses a clear understanding of the state's expectations and allocates resources consistent with school and student needs, respects differences among schools, has, understands roles of central administration and building administrators, and has a sense of humor. Community, just a few, ability and willingness to work closely with community agencies, ability to build relations between the district and MTSU, active leadership abilities, a deep understanding of challenging and creating schools which allow children and teachers to strengthen creative thinking skills, someone with a strong understanding of how children learn, someone who is open to dialogue and cooperation with the Rutherford County School System as a feeder school system, well-developed analytical skills, and you may be able to identify the person that felt it was also important that they have the willingness to work with law enforcement. We thought we should include that as a community input. Faculty, someone who has a place in their heart for children, someone who is a healer, a leader who unifies, a leader or a person who makes decisions based on children's needs, who respects teachers, who is thick-skinned, and has a transparent leadership style. And support staff, a doctorate in education preferred, someone who is non-political, someone with fiscal background, and strong decisive management skills. That's basically a restatement. This next chart, I'm not going to spend a lot of time with, but if you remember that all respondents were asked to rank the 10 characteristics, and that's on page 14 of your report. This first chart basically says how diverse the input was from every group. You can see the range of the rankings. For example, on the first item, it ranked, depending upon the different constituent groups, administrator board, community faculty, parent, support staff, 1 to 6 to 1 to 10 in terms of the rating. So I'm not going to spend a lot of time with this. It just points out that there's a wide range of difference in how individuals ranked. The next table tells a clear story, if you will. What we did is take, again, take all of the input, and you can see at the top the number of respondents from each constituent group. But we were then able to summarize a ranking, and the top four were ability and willingness to build positive relationships with faculty, staff, and parents, accountable and holds everyone in the organization accountable, effective communication skills, spoken, written, and listening, ability to articulate a clear vision for the school district, and the fifth, collaborative leadership style. The, you never know how this is going to come out, frankly, but the lowest rated, and that doesn't mean that any of these are unimportant, but the lowest rated on the composite was awareness of instructional administrative applications of technology, experience as a director or superintendent, and fiscal management expertise. Once again, not a scientific sample, but what we received in terms of the input that was offered. And page 17 is just, we could not have listed all the comments made. There were literally, there were 50 to 75 comments made. Diana basically looked at all of the samples and pulled out these as examples of some of the comments, and you'll see that they're both positive and negative. We're not really identifying any of these comments as being anything other than representative of some of the things that were written on the forms that we received. That's essentially what we heard, and what we would report is the findings in this regard. Do you have any questions on that part of the report?
Question?
Yes, sir.
On the charts?
Mm-hmm.
Page 15, like N equals 17, what does that represent?
That means that there were 17 administrators that responded and filled out a rank, ranking, and seven board members, et cetera. Excuse me. Any other questions?
It's a good document. Thank you very much, Dr. Jones.
Very welcome. Hopefully, it'll be helpful, it'll be helpful to us, hopefully, it'll be helpful to you as well. Any questions about the report itself before we move to criteria?
Well, I was going to ask about the report, Dr. Jones. As I look through, of course, I see we have a pretty evenly mixed crop of comments from everyone, and it, I mean, does it typically show up like this when you do a search? Like, this is telling us that every, everyone who was talked to, what they said, but pretty much what would have been said in any situation, don't you think?
Not necessarily, no, no.
What made ours different?
Well, I think a lot of what we heard, we would have heard anyplace.
Okay.
What made yours different is that not every district we work in has a diverse population, for example. Not every district that we work in is a district that has the, and I'll just coin, I'll use a phrase that everyone's familiar with, has the achievement gap issues that your district has. That doesn't mean that it's unusual, but it's also a part of, as we're looking at results-based outcomes, there are some communities where this is more evident than others, and that, for example, is more evident in your community than some others in which we've worked. So it'd be those kind of, let's say, unique elements, qualities, if you will, that would exist here because of the population you serve, in one case. The other thing that is not common in all instances is the feeling that there is, you know, conflict within the governing body. We don't hear that in every place we go.
And you did hear that a lot here.
We did, consistently, across, that's why it was listed as a matter, across all stakeholder groups. And it's something, as I indicated to you all earlier, that, you know, we report what we've heard, and I would put strength in what we have identified as consistent themes, because that's what we heard across groups. I wouldn't put a whole lot of strength in what we heard, you know, as we've reported and other, you know, from other input, other than, it's important that you hear it, but we haven't made any, drawn any conclusions based upon the other comments, more upon the consistent themes. And those consistent themes is what has driven what we're proposing as a draft of your criteria.
Do you have any idea, I'm assuming administrative, how many of these questionnaires were sent out in the different groups, like community, faculty, and parent?
Well, I can't tell you numbers, but I, and I'll ask Mrs. Ridley to correct me if I misstate this, but I can't give you a number, but I can tell you the range of the outreach. It was on your website, so anyone could go on your website and respond directly, it was linked directly to us. I would say, because they all flowed through my office and back to me, about 30 came that way electronically. As far as the distribution within the district, my understanding is that it went out through all the schools, that it was available through all the schools. I don't recall, did you publish one in the newspaper? That did not happen. But hundreds, thousands, most likely, went out, and we have 200 back. Is that a fair statement?
So is this typical?
Not unusual.
Not unusual.
It's not unusual.
So what I would consider a low number from the community, faculty, and parent is not unusual? is not unusual percentage-wise getting those back?
Well, when you put it in that context, in terms of the numbers for those two groups, we normally get a higher percentage of response
Okay.
from those two groups. It's not unusual in the other regard, at all. In fact, you have a pretty good response rate in the other, you know, the other groups that are identified. You're aware that the community meeting was not well-attended. That isn't because it wasn't announced and wasn't advertised and it wasn't available. I think I've said to you previously, that's not unusual, but it's disappointing to every board. Even though it isn't, it isn't unusual, it's disappointing. But we value the input from the people that take the time and the effort to provide it to us.
I'm surprised there not more, there weren't more faculty responses. Is that unusual?
Yeah, I think it is. Mr. Phillips raised that point, and Mr. Hopper, I, you know, I think it is. I think it is unusual for the size of your district. And I'm not going to, I'm not going to draw any conclusions from that, just to answer your question. You know, we typically would see a higher response rate.
Are there any more questions from any of the board members, or anything you'd like to say?
All right. You'll notice that what is presented to you is a draft of suggested criteria. This was, this was written with the concept, as was the case in the interim, that we would seek an individual who is an advocate for all students and possesses most, if not all. We didn't say that, but that's certainly what we expect, as we said in the executive summary, that if we can find someone with everything, that's ideal. Our goal is to find someone that meets, if not all, you know, most of everything that we have listed here. The demonstrated ability to is really a restatement of what we heard, and rather than my reading to you what you have received, this is what we identified from what we heard. And I would ask if you have any questions about any of the bullet points identified under the demonstrated ability to, and once again, these are in alphabetic order.
Board members, are there any questions, or anything you see on the criteria under the demonstrated ability to? Anything you think shouldn't be there, or something's missing maybe, that you think should be there?
I don't see much about, there's a little bit of management in there. I don't see much about financial experience, or...
Let's, let's look at the second part.
Okay.
The possession of. If you look at the second part, Dr. Andrews, you'll see that we talk about a management approach.
Right.
We talk about organizational management skills. We talk about fiscal.
Perfect, right.
Okay. So let's move to that section. Is there anything here that requires clarification? And let me point out, as I said that I would, we've differentiated between what we perceive as an elementary school experience and knowledge of and experience with pre-K through six programs and services.
I'd like to comment that I think experience as a teacher and/or principal, preferably I don't want someone who might be really outstanding in every other area not to apply if they haven't done it in an elementary school or school system.
If, you know, if we are comfortable with the fact that we, we're not suggesting that everyone has to meet every one of these, we could, if I heard you correctly, though, change that to read experience as an elementary teacher or principal preferred. Is that, would that work for you?
It would for me.
Is that a change that others would, would like to see?
Dr. Buttrum?
I would, I would really like to see that required because, especially with No Child Left Behind, there is such a difference in the guidelines for elementary instruction as opposed to middle-level and high-school instruction, also in the way those scores are calculated and monitored. I just really think we need someone who has had actual experience with elementary instruction, because that's what makes us special. And, you know, to have someone come in that has never taught, worked in an elementary system, and it could be someone who would possibly have worked in a K-12 system, but may have been an elementary coordinator. So I don't, again, I don't want to say they have to have been a teacher, but somehow they needed to have worked with an elementary population.
Well, as I'm defining elementary population, and frankly, it's a regional kind of mindset. I'm defining elementary education as K-8. The districts that we've worked with that are elementary districts are K-8. I did differentiate in terms of knowledge of and experience with pre-K six programs and services. That's different from needing to have been a teacher or a principal.
Yeah, but knowledge of and actual experience with would be a huge factor.
It is a huge factor, and I'm suggesting that, you know, that we leave that in.
Yeah, but I mean, I think we also, I don't think we should replace experience with knowledge of. I think they should, still should have had some experience in a pre-K six program, school, central office, something that tied them to the specific curriculum and instruction.
That's not really what we heard. I know, I understand what you're saying, but it depends on how you, without getting into a debate on terminology, it gets into how you define knowledge of and experience with pre-K. If you have been involved in developing programs, you have experience with those programs. And that may be at a, at a management level rather than at a classroom level. So I think it says both. I mean, it addresses both, I believe, and that was the intention.
Well, if we, if we do have an applicant who is very good, but they only have seventh grade and up experience with students, or teachers instructing students of that age, then, you know, I want that noted, because we, we don't have seventh graders.
Well, that, that isn't what was intended, and what was presented here is to be that What was intended was to point out that someone had to have knowledge of working with younger children. That's what was intended and what's stated here.
But I like the experience with, not just the knowledge of. Again, I understand someone being on a committee to decide curriculum issues for ninth graders may have knowledge of that curriculum, but I would rather have someone who's worked actually with the ninth graders in teaching that curriculum, as an example.
Well, I would just discourage you from being too restrictive, and remind you that we have said that we are expecting that we would, we would look for someone that has all, but we've said to you in our executive summary, and I've said to you in my remarks, that we're not assuring that we would bring people that would meet all, but most of, if not all. And we're guided from, you know, what we, what we've heard. I don't think that what you're seeking and what I'm, what I, what we have presented in terms of what we heard is that different. But I don't have, I don't have a reference point other than, than what we heard. So there, there's, appears to be, and I need to point out one other thing, too. I said that these are all in alphabetic order, and I didn't see this until today, that passion about student performance improvement, the pursuit of quality, needs to be placed up before political acumen, and, but we have a question on the table in terms of bullet point four, which talks about experience as an elementary teacher and/or principal. Dr. Andrews suggested that that, that the word preferred be included, and Dr. Buttrum has suggested that the word required. And, you know, I would suggest that you not limit yourself in either instance, but assume that we're going to make a judgment about who we bring to you based upon those that meet most, if not all, of the, of the criteria. And that's, that's the same context in which we presented the interim directors to you. I didn't bring that copy along, but I feel pretty confident in saying that not everyone met all of the criteria that were listed in that sample. And I think it's unrealistic to expect that particularly with the breadth of experience and background and knowledge that this individual is expected to have, to be restrictive. I don't think it's, I don't think it's in your best interest to be restrictive.
I'm reassured, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, and then, Mr. Campbell.
Yeah, I'm reassured by your comments. I wouldn't want us to pass up somebody who would be an outstanding leader who might not meet some of those criteria, and I think that, I think we can trust you not to take someone out of the pool that's outstanding in many ways and maybe doesn't have one of these, hasn't met one of the bullet points.
Dr. Andrews, what is it that you're wanting in this fourth bullet?
I'd like to have somebody who has, who has been a teacher or a principal, but, you know, maybe they've had their experience in other ways in an elementary school system. Maybe they've been a director of instruction, or, you know, there just may be some other, other ways that they've had some experience, but not meet that exactly. And I think he's reassured me that we would not exclude someone who met everything else and looked like a really fine candidate if they didn't meet one of these particular requirements.
Well, and I've said all along, I think that a person who is leading a pre-K through six program needs to have the experience of being in the trenches in that, somewhere in that pre-K through six program. And that would be as a teacher. I just think that's, I think that's a necessity, because it would be very difficult for me to be able to know how the teacher in the pre-K program, what they're doing, if I haven't had some knowledge of being somewhere in there, not necessarily as a pre-K teacher, but I think they need to have that, that experience of being involved in that program. And I guess that's, that's what this would do?
Well, only if, no, in my mind, it wouldn't do that. It wouldn't, it would put that out there as something that we should look at, but it wouldn't be a, you know, a knockout criteria, because we're not feeling that this statement should be that kind of a statement, that it reflects what we've heard, and we think that the persons that we bring to you should possess most, if not all. And that's consistent with what we said in our report that you received Monday, and it's consistent with what you've heard me say tonight. So we're not changing our, our song, and I think it's, I think it would be too restrictive. And I, I would say that I, if someone did not have any knowledge of or experience with pre-K through six programs and services, and that wasn't included, I would, I would think that we're ignoring that as something that we need to think about. I think it's there.
Okay, so.
I think it's there.
So, Dr. Andrews, you're saying to insert the word prefer experience as an elementary teacher and/or principal?
I don't think it's necessary from his explanation. I think it's okay, as long as we understand that there might be any of these things that, you know, one bullet or so that someone doesn't meet, but they might, we might end up choosing them because they would probably be the best person.
Now, Dr. Buttrum, you're looking at knowledge of?
No, he's looking at that one, too, I think.
Which one are you talking about, Ray?
Well, I wanted to make sure we had the word experience, it looks like. The experience there in bullet four. And in number nine, where it says knowledge of and experience with pre-K through six programs and services.
Okay, I agree. I think they ought to have some type of experience, and I think that's what it's, that's what it says. And that's what it says?
And, and for instance, I could see where maybe someone has been a director of schools in a very similar system to ours, a K-through-six school system or K-through-eight, and they've been a director, but maybe they've not been a teacher or a principal in one of those systems, and we might choose to look at them. That could possibly happen, but I think it's, we're probably going to find somebody who has this kind of experience, and it'll work out just fine. But I'm, I'm happy with Dr. Jones's explanation.
Okay.
Let me say something right here. While we're having conversation back and forth, and it's great, others have their hand up to talk, and we're going across them, and we need to just stop and get a little toe hold on it, because Mrs. Phillips had her hand, and Mrs. Duggan, so we'll give them a chance to kind of chime in a little bit, and then, Mr. Campbell, I want you to finish what you had to say, and then we'll go to Ms. Phillips, and then Ms. Duggan, then, and then, Dr. Andrews, if you have any more comment, we'll go there.
Well, that, that's what I was trying to make sure that I understood, what Dr. Andrews and Dr. Buttrum were discussing, and I think both of them have got the same bacon, the same idea, and I just think they ought to have some experience somewhere. I don't think that necessarily a director of instruction or somebody like that, without having some real experience in it, really knows what's going on. It's kind of like me being the nurse and trying to tell you how to do your job. I really had that experience.
I don't want to personalize this, but I was a K-8 superintendent for 23 years, and had, and was exposed to and involved deeply with issues related to every grade level. So I think, and my, I've already told you, my regional bias is that elementary is K-8. That's my regional bias. And if that's an issue for all of you, I'd prefer to take it out than to debate it, because we do talk about knowledge of and experience with pre-K through six programs and services. That doesn't mean they've had to teach kindergarten, but they have that knowledge and that sensitivity and that background that will enable them to understand what's happening in those programs. But I, that's all I'll say on the subject at this point.
You know, I think that, I understand, and I hear what you're saying, Dr. Jones, and, you know, since you and, and really, Dr. Buttrum are, are not so very far apart, and I suggest that we just leave it as it is and let you do your job, you know? We hired him to be our consultant, he's going to bring us the very best candidates for the job, and then we can vote on them. Just, I suggest we, we let Dr. Jones do his job and bring us the best candidates he has, that he can find for us, and then, and then we can look at their, at what they bring to the table and make a decision. But just let him do his job is what I suggest. There's only, but I do have one, one thing. I can't, I was kept looking through the papers here, and I think it was the faculty somewhere in some of these forms and assessments had placed one thing, and it's, you know, it sounded, it was just so true, because it said it, that the candidate have a heart for children.
That was a faculty comment.
It was a faculty. It was a faculty comment. I thought so, too, and I just loved that comment. And it just gets to the, you know, sorry, the heart of the matter, you know, that they have a heart for children. And I sure would love to see that included. And I'm sure it is, but in just such a clear way, I'd love to have that included. So those are my thoughts.
Okay. Ms. Duggan?
On page two of the document, it says constituents seek a collaborative leader who is an experienced educator, preferably at the elementary level. And I understand that word preferably. I feel very strongly that and I'm in agreement with you, we don't need to tie ourselves into a put ourselves in a little box and not be able to look at every candidate that might apply. However, I do have very strong feelings about this person having elementary experience pre-K through six, you know, in our area and a good part of Tennessee, you know, most of seventh and eighth grade is part of a middle school situation, and if that's their only experience. I think with education becoming more and more specialized all the time, we, you know, that preferably becomes a, you know, I tend to push it to the side of almost a must, but at the same time, I really don't want to put that word there. But I see a need for having someone who has experience with that pre-K through sixth grade population. And I'm not saying they should have taught pre-K in sixth grade and fourth grade, but they need some firsthand experience, because it's very different in a pre-K through sixth grade district versus going into a school system that's pre-K through 12. And a person, you know, or, of course, there are no that I'm aware of, just seventh through 12th grade districts, but because we are a very unique school system, because of the grade makeup, I think we, in order to move to that premier school system, we need someone that has a really strong understanding of elementary schools. I'm fine with the wording the way it is.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any more comments? Any comment, any more comments?
There is one other item that you may have a lot of comment about.
Okay.
If you look at the the statement immediately after, the list of of skills and attributes, experience as a director slash superintendent and an earned doctorate from an accredited university are preferred but not required. And I would be remiss if I didn't point that out, because it's something that we typically would put in, but I don't want you to not recognize that it's there, and we're going to ask you to adopt this document. So I want you to feel comfortable with everything that that we presented.
I would like to add a heart for children.
Ms. Phillips, did you have a comment that you wanted to make?
I think that that is quite adequate to what our needs would be. And I realize that I did not make a motion that we add a heart for children to the criteria. Do we need a motion for that, Ms. Baker?
Yeah, I'd second that.
So I would make the motion that we add a heart for children to the criteria.
There is a motion on the floor, and there is a second. Are there any questions? Mrs. Phillips is wanting to add to the document, the draft criteria, a heart for children. Any discussion?
I think the specific quote is has place in heart for children.
Has has?
I loved that quote. I just thought it was just so germane.
Has place in heart. Question, Ms. Hopper?
How are you going to determine that?
Well, obviously, if they, I mean, more more than likely, if they've spent their whole life in education, they already possess that. But I want it to be the focus in the I want, you know, that's one of those intangibles that I think people can tell if someone's doing a job because it's their job or doing the job because it is something very dear to the heart. I can tell when I talk to people. I bet each one of you can, too. My guess is and my guess is that our consultant would be able to, too. So it is an intangible, but there are many intangibles.
Where exactly did you want us to put that?
Well, if you if you agree to that, it would be placed in alphabetical order, which would be placed between integrity and high performance. But I I thought Mrs. Duggan had a comment or a question.
Or the possession of. It'd be under possession of.
It'd be under possession of, yes.
Okay. Are there? Ms. Duggan?
Did you? Ms. Phillips, did you actually make a motion?
I did.
Okay. Would you consider altering your motion to include under that last bullet where it says passion about student performance to say a heart for and passion for student performance?
No. I like I like I don't mind amending, but it's I don't want to get it tied up with performance. I just want it to be about the focus on the children.
And actually, I it would be it would not be the direct quote, or it would not fit. As I'm looking at it, it would be possession of a place in his slash her heart for children.
Possession. I would like that person to clearly demonstrate that they have a heart for children.
Dr. Andrews, you had a comment or a question?
I was just going to comment that I think it's it's it is fine to include that. We, you know, we sort of have left brain, right brain going, and we really need to have someone who is creative, who appreciates the arts, is empathetic with people, has those kinds of skills, and also who is able to manage what's really a large business, have be able to handle the finances and employees and that kind of thing. So we need somebody who's going to have a good balance of both of those sides. And I think it's fine to include something that you can't measure, that is more of a an intuitive type thing. And I can't see where it would hurt us to include it.
And I think you're absolutely right. We do require a clear balance for someone to to lead a system of this size with so many employees, so many children. But I do think I just love the comment from the faculty, and if I could find some way, some wording to include that, because it really keeps us it really keeps us focused, I think. And I think it demonstrates that there are other elements to the job besides just managerial that I think are important. And I think other things point that out, too, not just that. But I thought it just said it so clearly, that I wanted to find some way to include the the faculty members' comment, if I could. And so if if that if that wording, you can smile.
Oh, no, I don't know how to smile.
It's okay. But I still think it's I still think it's pertinent, and I'm fighting for it.
No, it's your discussion at this point.
Yes, yes. I would like that's my motion, that we that we include that the candidate have a?
A place in his or her heart for children.
No, clearly demonstrate a heart for children.
Or it says possession of, and then you need to have something that would follow that. Possession of?
Well, just clearly.
A heart for children or something like that.
Clearly demonstrates a heart for children is what I would prefer, but I I'm open.
You're going to have to reword it where it fits.
It has to say possession of, and then something. That's what it is.
Possession of, let's see, possession of?
A heart for children, if that's what you want. Heart for children.
That changes it a little bit, I think.
Oh, yeah.
A place in his or her heart for children.
Possession of a place in?
If you choose to.
Why don't you work on that? I'm sure that we would do it. If my if there's a consensus with the rest of the board.
Well, before I ask for this motion, before you vote on it, you need to know what it's going to say, so you'll have an idea. We're going to vote on this document.
If I write it, it will say possession of a place in his slash her heart for children.
I'm fine with that.
Is there any more questions or comments before we ask for a vote? Here are none. And Ms. Ridley, did you get that motion? All righty. And I hope it's reading possession of a place in his or her heart for children.
It will, if you approve it, yes.
All right, that's going to be determination of the the board. I'm not going to ask Ms. Ridley to call the roll.
I don't like that.
You want to hear him say yea or nay?
Oh, no, 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 that's fine. No, I was just talking to myself.
Okay. I'm sorry. All in favor of adding this to the draft criteria for director of Mupper City Schools? It says possession of. I better let the law, Ms. Ridley, would you read that?
Possession of a place in his or her heart for children.
All in favor by sign of aye?
Aye.
All opposes the like sign, nay. Oh, well, it passed that we will add that.
Good.
Thank you, Dr. Jones.
You're very welcome. Is there any further comment on the statement relative to experience and earned doctorate being preferred but not required?
Like to comment?
Yes, Dr. Andrews?
I think you may have sent us out two documents, and one of them may have missed that.
The second one, that's right.
And I missed it in the first one, so I was glad to see that there.
The reason you got a second is that I clicked the wrong draft, and I sent it to Kelly when I realized that I had. The earlier draft did not have this, but this is, as I said, language we commonly have in our our statement.
I was glad to see it there.
So it was an oversight.
Great.
Ms. Hopper?
Would it help you narrow the search or expand the search if we said experience as a director or an assistant director? I'm questioning how many applicants there would be if we're saying we're looking for all these qualifications and with the case six emphasis, do you need a broader scope of possible candidates?
As long as it's not required, I don't. In other words, and let me explain that. I think your your question is if we advertise this, is this going to limit our response? And I and I think not, because it is something that now, if we had said, and there are districts we work with that say are required, period, end of statement, then that that immediately knocks people out. But people that are applying are looking are understanding what this says, that we that's the board would prefer to have that, but it's not required as a as an absolute. The other thing I would say to you is that in this short timeframe, the turnaround, we're going to be recruiting, and we'll have, I can't predict the number of applicants. Other than to say it's been posted on our website now for a month to six weeks, and probably because we haven't yet posted the criteria or the profile report, which we will also do, so candidates can see that. We've had just a handful of responses, maybe less than a dozen responses to this point. It'll pick up. You can see that we identify that we are going to screen up through November 6 and bring you us late on November 17. So it'll pick up. And our recruitment activity will pick up as well. That will influence your numbers. I don't think it's going to be a problem, Mr. Hopper. And I think that, you know, that the kind of people that you're going to want to see are going to be pretty solid and have pretty sound backgrounds. And if anyone surfaces who is an assistant or an associate, we're not going to rule them out as possibilities.
This way. Dr. Buttram?
Dr. Jones, did you said you had maybe around a dozen applicants already?
Roughly.
Submitted an application at this point? Were there? I know we had an opportunity to to suggest someone, and although I didn't, were there suggestions from any of the focus groups?
We had nominations of, I'm not going to tell you who they are.
No, no.
But we had nominations of 13 people coming out of that that group. And I have only had contact with two at this point, and we'll have contact with the balance by the end of this week to see if they are really serious about wanting to to be considered. And I know that, you know, one individual that's named, I know well, and that recruited him for another position, and he would be perfect, but he's not he's not going to move. So that doesn't mean that all the people whose names were given to us are really people that are going to, if, you know, if invited, express an interest in wanting to to apply.
But you did you have contacted them or will contact them and ask them?
All of them, yeah.
Or let them know that they were at least nominated?
And the way I do that is is I will say to them that you have during the process, we invited nominations, and your name surfaced. I won't, you know, reference the number of times or anything of that nature. And my call is merely to inquire as to whether this is something of which in which you have interest. If you have interest, then we require everyone who has interest to fill out an application. We don't consider them a candidate until they've completed an application and clicked off on it. When they have done that, then they're a candidate. And that'll be their choice.
Looking at the number of candidates that you had suggested through our focus groups, were there any that you felt were named more than others? I know you said you don't want to say say that to them, but would you be able to share any of that information with us at a time before we interview to let us know that that's what the community?
If you think it's relevant, I I think that it's what's more important, that these people had an opportunity to say this is someone that I think you should consider. We will then, should they respond, determine whether there are people that meet overall most of the criteria and present, you know, those that do to you. I would say that only this, because I think it I don't I really don't think it's it's not relevant to me, honestly. Were there people that had multiple? Yes, there were. Six of the 13 that had multiple nominations. The balance were just a single name. And I I really don't know where all these people are, because in many cases, we just got a name. In some cases, we got contact information. And where we have contact information, it's going to be easy to to follow up with them.
Well, I asked the question just because I I know we we gave our opinion, but I would certainly like to know before we interview as many opinions of all those stakeholders also. I know we've gotten we've gotten a summary of those, but, you know, our constituents, those people who elect us, I'd like for them to come out and tell us, you know, we this is the type of person we want. It would just help me be better informed is what the community wants, because, again, I'm a representative of them.
I understand that.
Dr. Andrews?
I sort of had the feeling that's what we I sorta had the feeling that's what we got, that we got a lot of information from the stakeholders and feel this is very valuable. And I really appreciate all the input that we've gotten from people in the school system, from the community, from parents. I think it's going to be very useful.
Are there any other comments or questions?
I have nothing else to add.
Any board members have any questions or comments concerning this process or?
Do we now need a motion that we actually adopt this document?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'd like to move that we accept the document that we've been presenting as a draft and make it our criteria.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second to adopt the criteria that was set for director of schools as presented by Dr. Jones. Ms. Ridley, call the roll, please.
Dr. Andrews?
Aye.
Dr. Beckman?
Yes.
Ms. Campbell?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Duggan?
Yes.
Ms. Hopper?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Wade?
Yes. Thank you all so much and thank you, Dr. Jones.
You're very welcome.
For the wonderful work that you've done on this.
May I give you just a piece of information? It doesn't...it only requires a brief explanation and I'm not expecting conversation. I think it's a conversation you'll need to have. I have endeavored...I guess I have to sit here until I've finished. I have endeavored to get current data relative to directors' compensation, specifically base salaries. My efforts and the efforts of Lee Wilkerson have been limited to availability of data that only goes, is as current as 2007, 2008. So what I have done with that, I've copied that data for you. But I have also made some assumptions, which you will see. And let me just give this to you and I'll walk it through you very quickly. It could've been a lot easier twenty years ago. Get through this all so fast. I felt that it would be helpful to you to have something to think about in terms of compensation. And I did review this with Lee prior to the meeting. And I made some assumptions, I'll just clarify them. One, currently, your most recent director's salary was in the top quartile of salaries across the state. And if you look at the last or the third page, you'll see all the salaries listed, high to low. But again, keep in mind, that's 2007, 2008. I then, to try to advance those numbers forward, made some assumptions. And again, limited it to the top quartile. And I made the assumption that there may have been overall a 3% increase in base compensation on 2008, 2009, then a 2% for 2009, 2010, which is the current year. And then a potential, although, you know, it's only an assumption, that there would be a 2% increase in 2010, 2011, which depending upon when your director is hired or I should say when your director's effective date of employment might be, may or may not be relevant. I also, I included the average, which of the top quartile for each of those years, starting with the base year 2007, 2008. But then I also included the median. And I would tell you that my bias in terms of more accuracy is the median versus the average. Because you have very highs and very lows in the calculation of your average and it isn't necessarily the right statistical perspective, if you will. And so, and I'm not, and I emphasize, I am not proposing this as salaries. I'm not suggesting this should be the salary of a director. I'm suggesting it's background information that you should have to think about. And I had to advance it because I could not get more current data. And that's essentially what you have. You have everything that Lee was able to acquire. I went through every website that I thought might give it to me and I couldn't get it. Now, if that becomes available, Lee knows that I want it and you would want it, you know, if more current data comes, becomes available. But this is something that you all will need to think about and I just wanted to give you some background information.
Ms. Duggan had a question. Oh, sorry.
Yes, but it has nothing to do with this.
Okay, alrighty. Your comment, a question, it's not on this, but go ahead.
Well, does anybody have a comment about this before I?
Any questions for Dr. Art Jones about the salary?
Salary thing? Well, it is kinda outdated, isn't it?
Yes, it is. That's why I had to make some assumptions to give you at least something to think about.
Mr. Hopper?
Do we not have access to the southeastern average salaries that we've had access to that in the past for teachers and administrators? Do we not have that now? A recent data from the southeastern averages?
We don't have, I don't have a candidate from that.
Do you have anything more recent than what we have here?
This is the most recent data that I could access.
Okay.
2007, 2008. They should post the 2008, '09 data. It should be posted by now, but I could not find it.
No, I didn't...I meant just in...well, do you have it for last year or a year ago?
You wanna come where we can, people can hear you?
Yes.
I stepped in alone, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I didn't catch the whole question. Could you?
I know in years past, the board has looked at the southeastern average salaries for teachers and administrators and directors and that type thing to see how we stood. And I didn't know if that...this appears to just be Tennessee salaries. And I didn't know if we have access to the southeastern averages.
I could try. I have not made that attempt to look at southeastern averages, no. I have not. And I'm sure it's available. I'm not sure I can find out where to go to find it.
I know in prior years, our teacher salaries have been competitive with the southeastern averages. Historically, our administrator salaries have not been. So I think it'd be informative for the board at least to know what that information is, if we could get that. Even if we didn't use it in this, I think it'd be nice for us to know kinda where we stood with that. And the other point was that for the last fifteen, twenty years, I know it's been the board's intent that we would be in the top 10% of pay in the schools in the state of Tennessee. I think we could exclude, you know, the larger districts like Davidson County and Memphis and that type thing. But I think we tried to use that as a target. So hopefully, when we come up with what range we're looking at for the director's salary, we'll be at least in the top 10% in the state, so if that's any help.
It's helpful for me to know.
Are there any other questions or comments about the salary or anything you'd like to say?
Well, now, does that mean that we're going to, when we have to decide on a salary, we've already chosen as a board that we're gonna stay in the top 10%?
I think Mr. Hopper was just making comments, weren't you?
I was just telling you what we've done in the past.
Yeah, I'm not assuming that you have made any decisions at this point. And I would encourage you to, when you have the conversation, to not think about it necessarily as a range. Because if I were a candidate or if any of you were candidates and you saw a posted range, you would expect to be at the higher end of that range, as would I. What we normally publish is what I believe is stated in the criteria statement. Well, actually, it isn't. What we normally publish is a competitive, and we did in your posting, that's where it is, excuse me, is a competitive compensation package. That's all we say, is a competitive compensation package. What I need from you is just some guidance. In this regard, I need to know your comfort zone. And what that means is if I have someone who is very interested and I think he or she meets the criteria, but they would demand $200,000 a year, I need to know whether you're comfortable with that. So what I'm getting at is you need to just think about and have some conversation. And I'm not suggesting that's where it would be, based upon what I've seen. That's why I used what I think is a higher number. But what I am suggesting is that you have some conversation about that and you let me know. And what we typically would do is if we see someone who is outside of that comfort range, we would, and we think that he or she would be someone you should see, we'll come to you and say, we're not going to explore this person's candidacy if the board is just, that's too far of a...it's too high to reach or it's too far for them to go. Because it's not in your best interest for me to bring someone whose expectations are greater than yours in terms of what their compensation might be. That doesn't mean that I'm encouraging it to provide me with a ceiling that is so low that it limits our ability to bring qualified candidates.
Dr. Jones, when do you need them to have that conversation since it's difficult to get the group back together?
Well, I think, my understanding is you have a regular meeting scheduled.
Yes.
This month. And if that conversation could occur at that point. We will, we have indicated that we will be screening up to the 6th. As I know I've said this to you before, if Superman or Superwoman materializes on the 16th of November, we're not gonna not consider them.
If there are no more, you have one, Ms. Campbell?
I think everybody will look at page three of the document that Dr. Jones has given us. It's a little bit more up-to-date salary schedule, particularly for middle Tennessee and parts of East Tennessee, but mostly it's middle. As compared to the chart that we had for 2007, 2008.
That is 2007, 2008.
I think, I think Ms. Campbell was referring to the last page.
Yes, sir.
Oh, the last page, not page three?
Yeah, I think he's referring to that. But my understanding is this two is the same year of 2007, 2008.
And, Dr. Jones, I think, Mr. Wilkerson, if he gets a chance to call, you could call school systems, Lee, and they will tell you exactly what the base pay is for their director. I did that a couple of years ago to try to get some information on director's salaries. But I would like for the board to make sure we look at the proper comparisons. Because when you're talking about a K six school system with 7,000 students versus a K 12 school system with 4,000 students, they're still apples to oranges. You can't just look at the number of students. You have to look at the type of students, the type of schools you have. And I really think that we need to talk to our liaison, to the council, about salary for this position. I'm not so certain that we've overpaid this position as a school system this size and that operates in an area like this for what we would expect for an administrator with just students and teachers through a sixth-grade program. So I'd like us to be aware of that.
Thank you.
And if we could get that information, maybe if we're gonna discuss before the next board meeting, maybe if we could get that.
And, Dr. Batrum, Dr. Andrews?
I'd like to comment that the board in the past has felt that we were kind of on the low side of where we wanted to be with our school system for payment, for pay for our administrators, that part of our decision about how much we want to pay for an administrator has to do with what we want out of our system. Do we want to be one of the systems that's sort of in the middle as far as achievement goes? We have decided as a system and acted as a system consistently to pay our teachers in the top 10% of the state, in fact, higher than that. We've aimed more toward being in the top 10. And we've done that purposefully because we want to have one of the best systems in the state. We want our city to be benefited by having children that start out in pre-K so that they get a good education, so that they come to school prepared. We try to have smaller class sizes and have the very best teachers we can. And we try to draw the best teachers we can so that we can serve our community very well and so that we all have children that will be paying taxes, that won't be on the welfare rolls, they won't be in prison. We've made that decision in the past and I would hope that we continue to operate on that premise that we need to have leadership that is among the strongest in the state. Our system has been recognized with national awards, with state awards. Our teachers have been recognized. And you don't get the best people by paying an average salary for the director. So I would like to encourage us to consider that this one salary, we may end up... we're probably going to need to pay a good bit more than we have paid in the past, would be my impression. And I think we were fortunate to have a director who would agree to work at the salary that she did.
May I suggest we table this discussion to the next scheduled board meeting? Be so we can discuss it when it's been advertised.
Not a problem with that. Dr. Jones, I have a question. What exactly do you want from this board? Since we're gonna have discussion at the next meeting concerning salary, what exactly?
I need to have some feeling, I'm sorry, excuse me, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Oh, no, you're fine.
We need to have, I need to have some feeling as to where you are, where you would be generally speaking in terms of a ceiling beyond which you would be comfortable as agents of your community. And I know Mr. Wilkerson will provide me anything he provides also. And if I can get better, if he and I can get better data, as was suggested, get it and get it to you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any more questions as we're going to be discussing this at the next board meeting? And Dr. Jones has told us what... And Dr. Jones has told us what he expects. Comment, alrighty, and then?
When you say you want guidance from us, are you talking about in dollars? Or are you just wanting us to say we want to be competitive? Or we want to pay in the top 10% of the state? Or give me some idea of what you're talking about?
See, here's, here's a, here's the downside of the open meetings conversation. Is if in that conversation, you give me a specific number, that becomes a number that is known. It's much more helpful to me if you give me some guidelines to follow. And those guidelines will guide, will direct me. And if I feel that anyone being considered is outside of those guidelines, then I would come back to Mrs. Wade and ask that she determine whether the board has an interest in stretching. But it is problematic if you say, I used a number that I don't think you would feel was comfortable. But you can't really give me a number that you are comfortable with. You have to give me guidelines.
And I hope that's pretty clear for all the members for the next meeting session, alrighty. Dr. Andrews, do you have anything else you wanted to say or comment?
He addressed it, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. Ms. Duggan has a comment, but not pertaining to this salary issue.
Actually, a question. I know previously that we discussed how many candidates we would interview.
Mm-hmm.
And I guess after going through the process of hiring an interim, I've begun to have some questions about that number. Earlier, you had shared with us what you normally recommend, and I believe you said that you recommended that we only interview three.
That's correct.
Because I'm assuming then that that's usually what your firm recommends.
It is in sunshine states. And I think as I had indicated previously, and may have not. The reason for that is that there are people who may not be looking for a job that would not expose their interest in the job if they are, you know, one of a larger number. If they're one of three, there's a good chance, a better chance than if they're one of five, or one of six, or one of whatever. So it is the norm in states such as yours. And that would be the case, you know, in Florida and Alabama. Your state, Georgia is not. South Carolina is not. But that is consistent if you have a sunshine law and open records act, as you do.
However, anyone who applies, who makes application with your firm, their name is published. Is that not accurate?
If they make application through our firm, they're subject to the open records act. And we have that posted clearly on our website. If they apply for the Murfreesboro directorship, their name goes on that, you know, that list, and it's available, just as the interim. So I hope that answers your question.
I guess in just reflecting over the last few weeks and speaking with other districts and trying to keep in mind what you've shared with us, I've kind of wanted to maybe have more than three people to interview. But, you know, that would be a decision the board would have to make as a group.
Mm-hmm.
So does anyone else have any thoughts?
I would like to see the number increased. I'd like to see five. This kind of gives us a broad, broader scope. But I've always been at that number, pretty much.
Dr. Andrews?
I would rather feel that, I think that sometimes you get the best people when you recruit. And I think that has been your experience. I remember you saying something about that. And since some of the best people might not apply unless they thought that they had a good shot at the job, I would rather have three people that might be a little bit better than what we might have gotten than five people. So I really appreciate your advice along that. And I wish we were not in a state where we had to make that kind of decision. But I think overall that we have our best opportunity to get a really high-quality person if we do the three as you suggest.
Two other things I would say. I've agreed to a very tight timeline in this process. And that is a factor also in feeling that I can do the job you want me to do, to screen and reference check, et cetera, people that might be brought to you. The other thing I would say is that, as has been said before, if you don't like any of the three, I'll keep looking. It's the board's decision. Those are my thoughts in response.
One of the things I like so much about having a consultant is the blindness of the consultant and that, and that, you know, as with our interim, bringing us the interim candidates, there was, there were, the people earned their position there that were brought to us. They earned it. And each of the candidates, I'm sure that you will bring us as a permanent director, will earn them. And you're bringing them with your years of experience and your company's, the integrity and the experience that your company brings to the table. And that's one of the best things about having consultants, is we are, we have engaged them to bring us the top candidates for the position. And I feel sure that they will do that. And that's what I like about it.
Any more comments or questions? For Dr. Jones?
I have nothing more to add, other than to once again acknowledge the cooperation that we received from the many people who were involved. And feel that we learned a great deal, and hopefully, this will be helpful to the board as well.
Board members, is there anything else that you have that you'd like to talk about? Or is it on the agenda for tonight? We look like we've covered it all.
Will we get to meet again tomorrow night?
You need to get with Dr. Jones, and maybe he can set you up a meeting.
When do we meet again?
About every other day for the rest of the year.
October 27?
October, is it October? October 27 is the full board meeting. I look forward to seeing all of the board members at that time. If there's nothing else on your slate, the meeting is adjourned.